All this meeting to order. The first order of business is to invite the nations.
Let the leaders sit in the aisle of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to this, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second. They have a recommendation to second on paper.
Aye.
Proposed? So carried. Everybody have a chance to look at their minutes? Any deletions or corrections? I recommend approval of the minute of January 19th, 2021, Record Council meeting.
Second.
They have a recommendation to second on paper.
Aye.
Proposed? So carried. To review the list of claims from January 2020. I have a couple of questions I'm going to ask Cheryl. Is that just a misprint that said Nick Sears' phone is for Nick, the other Nick?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
I figured that, but I double-checked. And then what's the LMC? I'm just curious, what is the LMC?
The Lake of Minnesota City.
The Lake of Minnesota City, what?
Yeah, Todd signed up for training.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion to second on paper?
Aye.
Proposed? So carried. To review the account accounts and dispersment of funds in the financials of the general water sewer funds for January 31st, 2021. I want a motion to table?
I'll second.
They have a recommendation to set on paper.
Aye.
Proposed? So carried. Recommend approval of the transfers of the water sewer fund of 2011 with Water Geo and Broad River Funds, General Auction Funds. Motion to approve?
I'll second.
They have a motion to set on paper.
Aye.
Proposed? So carried. To recommend approval of transfers of the general fund of 2018 General Auctions Reconstruction Fund. Motion to approve?
Second.
They recommend approval of a motion to set on paper.
Aye.
Proposed? So carried. Minnesota Business Relief Fund, provided if you read that. Question that was brought up on that, and Cheryl did some research into it. Is whether our, big question for us is whether our city municipal liquor store is eligible for the COVID relief money that's available. In talking to our county commissioners last night, I phoned them and they were coming, getting.
Did you get the information from your neighbor Cheryl?
Yes, sir. Jason Schoen stopped by and we talked for a while and I gave him some information. And I also sent another email to our state representative, Ron Ackland.
Yes.
Asking, you know, to make sure that, you know, that we're not left out of all these relief funds. Because we, on the Minnesota Department of Revenue, found one that they, they automatically deposit money into accounts like, where it like, Rill automatically got 15 grand deposited into their account. They didn't do that for the beauties. So I filed an appeal. And Little Fork also has, I think they both have. So I guess what I want direction on now is, I guess I would like to go in and file the red application with the county, even though they seem like they're not going to give it to us.
Make them deny it. Put in the application and make them deny it because then he can appeal. Here's Paul, submit the application, obviously we said on that board too. And Shogun said something on that board, so we'll, like you say, we should make them send it to us right now. It makes no sense. Fill out the application and submit it and then we'll keep us noticed either myself or Robert will attend that meeting.
Well, we have been invited and I had noticed on the news they had the council already picked out and there was no representative from any of the cities.
I'll check into that. Cheryl, maybe you can check in that tomorrow, where Rainier's not on this one, why Rainier's not being represented?
Okay, yeah, I feel like they made, they made up a new committee.
Yep, that's what I thought too when I read the article.
Well, check and see if Rainier will be represented on that committee, okay?
Yes.
Now, they're all county people. I appreciate that. Any of you, Robert will take that position if it's available. You have a question? Eric, I guess. I guess, Brenda.
Do you know, does any different kind of funding or anything mail for nonprofits in the new fund?
There is funding available.
Okay.
You need to go to the Pooch County website and look, there's an application and everything and that is addressed nonprofits perfectly.
Also applications are available in just in Washington County there by the desk. There's a big table outside with those applications.
At the courthouse?
At the courthouse.
Perfect.
I seen them yesterday. Yes, you go with the entrance. Okay, the liquor store operating fund, General.
I was happy with our numbers for having to close at 10 o'clock. I really think people are starting to come back out, but they are still respecting, you know, the amount of people that can be in a bar right now. I haven't been able to do our wiener roast yet because it's a little too cold. But as soon as it warms up, I'd like to get that going.
Yeah, any type of insurance property in the environment such as we have here, you know, weather, COVID, all in particular, I think you're fine. I have questions about this on the positive side, so.
On which one?
Probably more for Cheryl than anything. On wages, it says $8,389.13.
And it's usually supposed to be.
And then it says vacation pay.
Yeah, one of our bartenders cashed out.
Oh, okay.
That's what that is.
That's our office.
Yeah. But the snowmobilers are coming, whether it's cold or not, and that's making a big difference. Yeah.
A question on that, do the $8,300, $8,400 vacation pay, where you cashed out, does that come off the monthly statement or do they vary or stay? Can we discount this one?
I think it's just monthly, isn't it?
Yeah, and all of that wasn't vacation paid. I just put that notation on there because it made the wages higher. But yeah, one of the bartenders cashed out all of her vacation and we knew it was going to skew the.
Yeah, and if you look at, you know, last January, it's only a grand difference. I mean, just over a grand, but.
Well, is the vacation pay coming?
Right.
Yeah, that's pretty good vacation.
Okay. I have a recommend rule.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second on paper.
Aye.
Proposed? Thanks for the carry.
Thank you.
What kind of issues do we have in this one, Nick?
Not a whole lot of big issues. Lot of little projects going on. Worked in the muni last few days, doing some stuff with the shelving in there. Still cutting lots of firewood. Had the truck break down a few times on us.
Back road. Go for the back line?
Yep.
1200 water breach should have started shortly.
That, we went down and looked at that dock and pulled a few boards off, looked at that where that sag is at. That top 5x6 is busted down the middle.
Is there a chance that you could jack it up with a hydraulic jack or something?
We'll bottle jack it up and just put another beam in there underneath of it.
I mentioned it, Nick, on the main dock down here, the existing main dock. There was a sag in, I don't sleep last fall. And now that there's ice there, it's time to examine, ask to examine and see what is the problem. It might be fixed, though.
Yep.
Just one, is it just one?
Just the one main beam on the top. Soon as we get above zero a little bit, we're going to go down to snowblow area. We can get in there and work.
You can take care of it now, it's a lot easier.
Oh, way easier than in the water.
Then you've got to take more like that.
Northern number.
Just the six by five?
Yep. Treated, yep.
I'm picturing big railroad track.
Pretty close to that.
Anywhere, everybody get the lights replaced at the billboard?
Yep, we got the billboard lights replaced. Rusty Blaze come out and help with that with the bucket truck from the city.
The lodge are here, Nick, on your report. Is there anything else that, you know, snowblowing, snowballing, everything? Travis doing fine, everything?
Yep, yep.
No issues at all?
I got with him after the last storm on a couple of spots for the snowmobile trail that we're getting pushed up. But it's pretty easy to fix with the bobcat.
Okay. We're going to have an issue coming up with these street signs that we're going to have to do something with. So why don't you stay there for a while? Any more questions, Nick, as far as maintenance reports? Okay, why don't you stay there for a minute? We're going to discuss the next issue is our town highway, that street sign issue. Being at the non-county roads anymore, we're going to have to, the state's supposed to have all the county 122, 123, whatever the numbers are. I believe there's 17 signs that we have to replace. We're going to have to make a decision here. I think the SAB sign, or you can check with the county or the city where they get them made. But one thing we're going to have to decide, what do we want to do? Would we rename the streets? I mean, that's something. Yeah, well, we can take, if we do, then we've got to give Nick a list. Obviously, we could do 17 signs. The one suggestion was by the county assistant engineers, you just cover over the.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about, just getting the reflective tape and just leave the sign, not buying the signs opposed. Because they said we can keep the signs, just put new lettering on it.
Does the county got to remove them signs?
No.
Those are the ones on the back where it's the one on the highway.
Okay.
The ones on the highway, they're going to, well, we can replace them. But I mean, as far as the street ones themselves, we can just put a stencil over them and call it Rainier Road, whatever, or.
Well, it could be that or we can come up with. Could be Rainier 122.
Yeah.
I would leave the number the way they are.
Yeah, you can leave that for, actually for confusion and everything else. We start changing things, you can call it Riverside Drive, or you can call it like Rock Road. We have that option, but then we have to buy a whole new sign and things like that.
Then you got to come up with a name.
By far the easiest is just use the existing signs and.
And existing numbers.
Use the same number, you don't have to change the numbers or anything, or even do make a handle that fits over the Pooch County sign.
Easier for everybody.
I think it'd be the least confusing on that.
Yes, sir, I agree.
And do we have to work with the whole stop, Cheryl?
Yes. What's that?
We have to work with the whole stop.
Because they're not going to be International Falls 56649. Once we change it, it's going to be 56668.
Yeah, before you're going to change.
We have some, we have to get.
That's a big battle, a battle that's been had for eight years.
You know, we may go over the camp worm shares once we got it. As far as the zip code right now, we're going to have to talk to the county and then we're going to have to get hold of the US Postal Service and we have to go through either our state legislator or stopper or whoever. We're going to have to do it because we probably should be looking at getting a zipper, different zip code for the citizens of Rainier because right now, if you use the International Falls zip code 56649, you are getting the International Falls tax on your bill. We're paying that sales tax, but we don't live in Rainier, I mean, in International Falls. So the only way we can do that is we add our own zip code because that's how they, you order something from the catalog, it's 566.
It may be.
Or you're going to get an extra 1% sales tax on it.
Yeah, it's maybe going to affect the people that live in Jamison addition and Prentition because our zip code is 56649. As far as the residents of Rainier go, they're already 56668, so this makes no, never mind to them. No, they won't bother them. It's just Prentition, Jamison addition, what is that, that part?
Cheryl, I wonder if you could set up a meeting with the county for us about getting that zip code changed? Because we're going to have to do that, otherwise the tax issue is going to keep rising and.
I know that none of us were here during the annexation, Cheryl was here and has got some more history on that than I did, but from what I've read, and maybe you guys do remember this, the post office wouldn't change the zip code because of the rural mail delivery and it would have to be sorted here, which, I mean, I don't know why it would make any difference, the guy can still pick it up there or deliver it, but they didn't want to do that. So that's where that whole issue comes about with the zip code.
They also talked about the residents.
They never want to do anything.
Right, the residents, they have PO boxes in there, would have to, either they can keep it there with their mailing address there or they'd have to come out to a PO box out here. So this post office would have to enlarge the post office box at its offer store rent and then any of the bidding for the rural mail delivery would all have to come out, function out of the Rainier Post Office. They made it as difficult as, because when I went up there and talked to that postmaster general, he was not a friendly person. He said that if they lost all that, they'd have to close down. And they were going around closing down post office. International Falls was on the list to be closed, but they made it because of all the people that live in this area that get their mail to that post office. And he says, "In the nap." And I said, "Thank you for your time," and walked out the door.
Well, then compounded that with the city tax, you know, getting permission to tax one percent extra tax of the people with the zip code that they have, get the tax. And how we collect that, you want to run up, every time you get a 35 cent bill or $10 bill, whatever it is, run up to the city, get reimbursed, you know, it shouldn't be on our problem. We're getting nothing from it, so they understand that. So we definitely need a meeting with the county on that. So if you could set something up for Cheryl and just let us know, maybe that council meeting, maybe we can have a date for that.
Who from the county would you want to meet with, Mayor?
I think you're.
Who from the county would you want to meet with?
Well, I think it should be the county board because there's a lot of county residents that are being affected by this, not just us, there's a couple of neighbor breakers that got the same zip code too. Zip code does not necessarily fall into the same boundaries as the city limits. Zip code is larger, therefore anybody in zip code area falls in that same problem.
So do you want to go before the county board?
I'd like to go to the county board because you do have to take care of this or try to get the, you know, the zip code change or something. There's no other way. Bernard, I see you have your hands up.
I just have a comment to make that being from Jamison addition. I'm assuming that regardless if we have to change the zip code, we're all going to have to change our address because it's not going to be county road now, it's going to be Rainier Road, Town Road. So if we cannot coincide at the same time, so we don't have to change our address for the ones?
It's going to take your driver's license, your passport.
So I mean, this simple thing can be taken care of now at the same time would be helpful for our residents.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, we just have to have, we don't want to be doing this twice. We could do it now, just like you pointed out, we go to county road and then the city street and then next week it's a different zip code, so I don't know if we next week. It would definitely, it shouldn't happen, so.
Can I say one more thing about that too, Mayor? When I look back through some of the notes on the annexation, there were, there was a discussion about assigning road names and they said, no one was going to address it right at that moment, but it was the intent to, in the future, to have a comprehensive review of the city's addressing system. This was all contemplated in the annexation process and it just hasn't been done. So I did reach out to the ARDC because they did the transportation plan and different plans for all these things during the annexation, to ask them if that's something they do and how much it would cost. Because you're going to have to go through, you know, unless, unless we're just going to do it on, I don't know, do it on our own, but.
Well, I think we've kind of come to an agreement to get a little plaque made up that says Rainier 122. You know, we already have 122, to get up a little four inch sign or whatever it is, two by four sign that says Rainier.
Right above all the numbers.
Couple of screws, I don't think that's going to break our budget, so if we have to do all posts and everything else, yeah, that could be a substantial cost. But if that's the route the council resides to go, and I think it makes the most sense, but of the least amount of confusion, obviously the cheapest way.
And everybody's address is still the same road.
Nothing really changes.
Yeah.
Road 122, county city, so you can dial the address.
You just have to get the post office, if they don't want to change the zip code number, which I know they're not wanting, they're going to fight for that. But if they don't, it's the people that, instead of it being County Road 122, it's now City Road 122. International, or Rainier, Minnesota, somebody in Rainier is going to have to, or in the post office is going to have to say, now this zip code, or Rainier zip code, this is the actual zip, instead of sending it back. Because I remember when we got annexed, I immediately went down to the post office and tried to get my address changed to 56668 and I did it on the bank just where the hell it. And I sent it in and a couple of weeks later, they came back from the post office stamp. It was not on the, whatever, no such address. And all I changed it was, was from the zip code 56649 to 5668 and post office said no.
I think where you probably want to come to that meeting with me too, because you really share experience to the county board and other issues. So we really have two definitions here, Nick. I didn't come to conclusion on how we're going to proceed on that other one, so if you want to look at that. I think there's 17 of them.
Mm-hmm.
I have.
Seventeen.
Authorizing, you know, whether they're two by four or something.
Well, Mayor, it's not 17 of them, it's 17 that are on the highway. And what they're going to, they won't let you do that on the highway. They're going to remove all those signs on the highway. If they want us to have like a green street sign that has to be placed X amount of feet off of their right way.
Just like Chapel Lane.
Yes, right.
Yeah, that's what we said.
The green ones that are.
And then I feel like, I mean, they have to be big enough to see from the highway because they're going to, they're not going to be, you know, you're not going to face them from the highway like you would now. And do you have an idea of what they would cost?
You know, you can, you can research that, Nick, get a SAB sign in Virginia.
I can talk to Teddy Brokaw.
Yeah, Teddy will do that. Actually, they make.
They got a stamp there for him.
They might make a stamp, so.
I can talk with Teddy and try to get him to help us out too.
Give us a little more information, put on, you know, and bring some costs to the table here next week.
Okay.
Come to the meeting or get it to Cheryl and she'll give us the.
I'll come next week and bring it.
So, and I made an argument to the main dock guy that they've gone this far this month and I, you know, said, you know, we had no idea this was going to happen and we did budget for it and they were, you know, they're going to remove them this spring, you know. And so I got him to push back to 2022, but he wants to see a plan from us this year.
Yeah, that's right. But the first, as any plan, the first thing we've got to do is know what it's going to cause.
Yeah.
We intend the plan will be altered or, I can't see it's going to break our budget no matter what we have.
No.
But get the price portion and we'll act on it.
The thing is, it's not that big of a deal. We get, we get the signs punched and made and get them where they want them. We can do it before 2022.
If they don't change the 56649, we have to worry about International Falls having the Town Road 122 or Town Road 116.
Right.
And we have a duplicate address, somebody else can never get our shit.
Right.
I don't get mine now. We got to send it to the full staff. Well, I think there's more issues here than what we think there are, but we have to start with the county and the US Postal Service, so don't expect any quick immediate answers. But Nick, if you can secure those prices, I think that's enough discussion on this.
Okay.
We'll talk a little over. Next issue, I think you all have the copy of the updated vote lunch on the marketing night. It was, this is more for the area by Sheriff Gulf, the Blue Street. And they, what they did there is, I think you all agree that they want to know what kind of option, whether you want to do a double lane or single lane. Why, I look, I got to open it up, I think it made some notes on there.
Yeah, definitely.
As you see in, I think it's called the option, angle parking option. I think it was pretty obvious what it is and everything. That allows you to have two lane access in and out, going back around, you know. I think that's what people are used to right now, you know, if anybody uses this public dock at the end. I see people, you know, entering in, like, or coming back around. And that pretty much leaves things the way they are, other than adding that angle parking on the north side.
So with the north, is that still, is that a one, that one way, that north alley, or is that?
Where are you wiring, General?
Yeah, the one they call internal area.
The alley, but next to the railroad tracks, that'd be a one way.
That is, so we go down to one way in front of the town, so you can do one way around.
Yeah. Option, option one, you got two lane traffic on the Blue Street, which is right here. Option two is just a one way, so they come down that way and then they'd have to exit. So that'd be like the Bruggmans and a couple of other people that live there. Well, they had to use that street data after, exit that way. And I didn't get them, I don't see no reason for that, so. We should have a meeting, a meeting on this. We should have a public meeting on this. The only issue I see, that I see on option one, I think also we got option two. They show a concrete alley coming from the proposed parking lot here as being concrete. You know, that alley through there. On the original design, we talked this over, that was going to be a crushed rock, rockway with four by four pulled through that end of the road. And so that's, it don't affect anything on the street, but I just see it's drawn in like this and that will bring that to the attention of Dunbar's and, and so. Did you see how they got their sign with additional parking? I think there's 21 of the digital, 21 of the parking boxes on this one. I mean, I think there's something there now, you know, people who park there now. So how many extra there'd be, I'm guessing it's going to add at least a dozen, maybe as many as 15 extra.
My question is here on this option one here, they have a. My question is here on this, option one here, they have a thirty-foot pad for turnaround. Isn't that kind of a fringe?
On Sharon's?
On Sharon's property?
No.
This is all on city property.
Yeah, it's all city property.
No, no property requirement necessary for, to acquire any property, yes, it's all in the city, city right of it.
But I thought we had discussed that we weren't gonna take any of the parking away from the business.
For her?
Is that gonna be too close?
Well, this would be adding parking.
No, the, this pad.
This what?
The turnaround pad? I mean, it's getting pretty close.
Yeah, I see what you're saying there, but quite honestly, where they, they park there, but there's really not, there's only, only one, I'm familiar with that, there's only one parking spot that she lose, really, if you look where the, the one that is colored in, right here, you know, that is colored in.
Yeah, I know, I guess I'm not so much concerned about the parking spot, is that the people are gonna be turning around there at ten o'clock at night with lights shining into the people who are riding around, and I think that's what I'm concerned.
Ten o'clock, that's gonna be close.
It's gonna be one of our concerns.
Yeah, we don't need the turnaround, but I don't think, no, just go ahead, drive around, turn around in the circle, but.
I would like to see us take this stuff home, look it over, and then on Tuesday, we probably wanna talk about having a further period on this, so we can get some feedback.
Well, for your information, and what we have to do is decide which way, because, you know, a couple months ago, we authorized these guys to do some plans for us, this got thrown in with the boat, you know, the boat landing proposition there, so these plans will be included, but they better know which way to draw it up. This, they're just conceptionary plans, right, and also look at them, they just need direction, and, you know. I do think we probably should try to maintain two-lane traffic there.
That's what I was gonna say, either option, you know, whether it's one or two, keep Deluce Street the two-way. I don't like the thirty-foot turnaround pad. I don't care for that.
Sorry?
The turnaround pad, that thirty-foot turnaround pad.
Not necessary, is what you're saying?
They can drive up to the road, up that alley, one-way alley, and then back down in. They don't need to be turning around. You're gonna have people coming in through there, two-way, be a boss.
That's fine, it's just, you know, they just threw that in. Basically, what you're saying is, it looked like, you know, curved line. Option two, like, like you're saying, a lane straight, but just a two-lane, get rid of that turnaround. But, yeah, they just leave circular, I mean, just a straight radius instead of a ball there.
And then the other one they have here for the boat ramp itself.
Okay, why don't you guys end, so next, by next council meeting, we decide which year, we'll think it over, look it over really good, and so we let WSN know as soon as possible, and if we're gonna do this, we wanna get it done, and we gotta get this, both meeting here scheduled, and we gotta have plans to do that, and there is now, now we have a deadline. We got the thirty-first of June to have this done by, and we're gonna do it. To take, let's say, to take advantage of the county project that was let yesterday, that has completion date of June thirty-first, and it's a lot of black top on it, sidewalk, concrete work, to utilize, to take advantage of those side contractors, if this thing's gonna happen, we'd want a bid letting and everything, so it could start, I mean, this is not a three-month project or anything, but we'd wanna utilize it to save some money, that's all. The decision can be the same, but it's important to save money to try to get it done by...
Do we have samples of these options, so if somebody wants to look at them, they can? What's that?
Samples of these options?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear, hey, look at them.
Well, I'm just saying, if somebody wants to look at them, I'd like it to be...
I mean, that's, that's all they gave us, is just so, you know, letter that came with was for consideration, this is what we look at. They pretty much got all their engineering done, they're, you know, they're ready to draw the plans.
I realize that, but I just want the citizens to know, this is what our options are.
I have a quick question, so the north alley, is that, is that scheduled to be repaired apart from the actual boat ramp project?
You know, it's a good question there, Jim. The issue on that, and I have not approached, I have approached him, but I've never had any in-depth conversations with him, because the reason that needs repair is the county drain for County 120 here, the main street, is that thirty-inch pipe that runs down the middle of it, that the frost has heated up, so that will have to be repaired, and again, that's a county pipe, so on city property, but that's, I'm sure they have an easement from us or something, but that's what I have to leave, a county issue to repair that.
So it's on the county to get that repaired?
And the county, you know, the county pipe, the county, you know, knock on wood, I can't see them not repairing it, I mean, it's their, their pipe, it definitely needs repair. And it ain't a major cost, it's a couple hundred feet of cove pipe, you know, so I believe, the pipe may be all right, it just maybe the frost has heated up, so, again, I'll talk to Dave Reiner, the county engineer, on that, and I'll try to do this early tomorrow, because that's, now that they have the other project, and by the way, the other project coming in under budget, so the allocated funds are less than what they anticipated, so, come eight point two percent under budget.
What's that?
The county, you know, the 120 county project, and so, you know, they have money to do it, let's do it that way, and so, yeah, that would have to be done, but that could definitely be repaired, so. Any other questions on this? Okay, then the other question, if you look, just flip your pages, there's, there's two, you know, and I have some footnotes on that too, if you look at the north alley, the straight entrance to the boat ramp, you see the day with the, okay, you need the first option, okay, alternate one on the planks, I have a little bit of issue with that, there's two things you can do there, if you look where the walkway, the handicap walkway out to the planks is, is located on the north side of that, at the minimum, that should be on the south side, because you see, if they put that there, those trees would have to be removed, and even if we have to move the whole planks over, you know, a couple feet to ensure that we don't have to take any trees, I think that's, you know, if we put it in straight, we still wanna move it south a little bit, there's no point taking any trees, you know, move it three, four feet, and certainly, when you put that ramp, because if you look on the other option, you know, for some reason, they got the ramp on the north side, you know, and that's okay in that option, that angled option, and in their notes, if you read them, they're double checking with the DNR, and they submitted this to the DNR, and strictly for what, if the DNR, they would like to see, I don't think there's any requirements, whether it could be straight or angled, but the DNR may have a preference that it maybe go in at an angle or go in straight, and so, get that information from Joe, but, you know, this way, there's absolutely no tree interference at all, and the ramp is on the north side, if you look at that, so. I'd like you guys to look at that too, and so that we have a decision by the council meeting next week, if you haven't made up your minds already. Okay, with that said, we're gonna just move on, we'll do a little homework for everybody. Obviously, these plans are at city here, someone wants to look at or pass the word around, they can take it, if they wanna look at our... Okay, we got the food, the food truck discussion, I think we discussed that here a while back, and Cheryl...
Yeah, there's some comments that were, that I put on the table with Ryan, and they're from Coretta and Robert.
We would like to revisit this.
And they would like to revisit the issue with you.
Sure. Just easier.
So first and foremost, I would like to say that I think food trucks can be a valuable part of our town, but I think we need to regulate them, because what I see is the food licensing fees that are established here in Rainier, I will actually use the word pitiful, because I don't think that's appropriate. I think they're pitiful, as far as the price, it's so low. So I wanna express that my taxes went up seventy-nine percent this year, I also, like the cost of me doing business on brick and mortar, I pay more in taxes than what they would pay to basically rent out, I mean, okay, let me start with the power first. The power pole is fourteen dollars a month, whether anybody uses it or not. When a food truck was there last summer, Cheryl pulled the information for me, and they weren't even open daily, they were open about an average of three days a week, the power went up sixty-four dollars, so basically, you have to...
Increased sixty-four?
It increased sixty-four dollars from the fourteen-dollar base.
Up to, what'd you say, seventy-eight dollars?
Yes, and so, the city basically has to rent out that, considering that you're renting it out every day for that whole time with the licensing fees you have established now, two weeks of renting it out barely pays the power bill, and if they're using it every day, then you're gonna look at probably double the power cost that I was looking at with Cheryl. So I did research on other cities and how they deal with this, and basically, there's strict rules in a lot of cities, and basically, you have to make reservations, you can, a lot of them have fees that if you cancel before or after the cancellation period, that you're allowed, then you lose your money for the fee for that day, because the fee should be open, there's five food trucks that I know of for sure in International Falls, and if somebody reserves a spot out here one day and they decide not to show up, then they're basically cutting out four other food trucks that didn't have a shot at that spot, so they should lose their money if they don't show, and I believe that twenty-five dollars for the post office spot, because it's less coveted, and fifty dollars for the late frontage, would be appropriate fees, because then it would cover the cost of the power, and the city would actually make a little money, because the whole point is, is that why would we have food trucks out here competing against your brick and mortar businesses if they bring no value to the city in monetary funds? Like, so, we have them out here competing against our business, but we don't get any money to fix roads, or fix curbs, or paint lines, or fix the dock, so for me, I just don't find the value in basically letting them be out here, and it's no revenue generator for the city, when they're competing against the rest of us. I think they should be welcome out here, but I think we should establish clear boundaries about where they can park, because last summer, somebody parked a food truck all the way across the whole pier, I could see it from the moment I turned into Rainier, all the way down, is that the kind of town that we want, where people gotta look at a food truck all the way coming down Main Street, all the way to the end? I did go down, I looked at the spot where the boat ramp is, and there is a wall right there, we could paint lines, a food truck could actually back into that spot, which would leave the pier open, it would leave the boat ramp open, it would leave Tara's parking open, it would leave Looney's parking open, but I think that the city should actually paint the spot, people need to be there when they rent it, otherwise, they pay, if they're not there, they still pay.
Or move it out of it.
What's that?
Or move it out of it.
Or move it out, and also, the city has been letting people stay, and I know there's no protocol for this, but where they're sitting overnight. The one thing I'll tell you about them sitting overnight, is where are they going to clean this truck, they have no water access here, so we're putting our citizens at risk by them not bringing their trucks home and cleaning them at night, besides the fact that they're plugged into our power, they're running their fridges and freezers all night long on our power, when they need to bring that truck home and clean it. I think if you establish and you say, I put on my list that I think you should have a three-day maximum in each spot, because that leaves it open for everybody to be able to get the late front spot, or the post office, which I actually think the post office spot is good, but I really feel like they should have to move it out every day, because this is not a parking spot. They get to come here, they get to work their money, they should move their truck out, take it home, clean it, bring it back the next morning. A lot of cities make you move it, even, I talked with Amanda Legu at length, she said even three-day festivals now make them move their trucks out to go clean them every night.
Well, I guess, I can see there is some adjustments that probably have to be made here, in my opinion, the only experience we've had with food trucks, other than last summer, towards the end of last summer, that one come in, what was at our celebrations, whether it's for the Rainier Day, things like that, and it set up on the Woods's property, other than that, we haven't had too many different things, so we did make some conversations, and we did make some requirements, obviously, you pointed out, electricity is probably the biggest issue, I think that could be probably addressed by allowing them to permit like a daily electrical fee, because we kinda know that they must take about, Cheryl, I mean, if it's seventy-five dollars for three days, or what, you know, the thing we can figure out with the electricity bill, is whether it's, you know, ten dollars a day for electricity, and things like that, so there may be some price adjustments on this, and yes, I agree with you.
I just made a template, so you guys can kinda review, Rob did the verbiage on it, because he does that for a living, so, yeah, basically, I just kinda made some plans that maybe people could discuss, this is what I would propose, but I know this is up for discussion, yeah.
This is the one you're talking about?
Yeah, and I really, like, I just think that with all of the restaurants closing all over the United States, that food trucks are the new trend, and unless we establish rules right now in Rainier about how we operate with food trucks, then we could be, you know, facing a lot of problems with it.
I think we did that, except I think they need to amend, we discussed this, we have some rules and regulations set up.
Yeah, and I think the rules and regulations are good.
And as you pointed out, I think they're probably insufficient as far as the daily fees or the requirements, I think we tried to address them, I think, did you see the permit that she...
Yeah, I've looked at the permits. Cheryl, can I ask?
So I appreciate this, Green, you know, really, I agree with you a hundred percent, we do have to add some rules and regulations before we're asking people to come here, put up food trucks.
But Rainier's a destination now. Rainier's a destination now, and we have to treat it as so.
Yeah, right, we have to make adjustments.
Yeah. Cheryl, do you remember offhand how many people paid for food permits last summer?
Zero.
There's my point, right there. Nobody paid, they all sat there, there's twenty-one days annually, which means year-round, that they can be in one spot, zero people paid for a food permit, because nobody is policing it, so no revenue, so the city paid for all that power, basically.
It's actually got that ordinance, didn't get passed.
Okay, okay, that's fair.
That's why we addressed this already, but, like I said, you pointed out some things that your electrical bill fees, we may have to revisit, we'll try to figure out, so it's more, more sustainable.
The city needs to make money off of this, this is what all other cities do, this is a revenue for the city.
I disagree with that, I disagree with that, when you say there's no value in some of these food trucks.
I didn't say there's no value, I do believe there's no, there's value.
I wrote it down, that's why I wanted to...
I believe there's value, I said, first and foremost, I find value.
The point I'm making, when we have a celebration, part of the celebrations are these cotton candy stores.
Oh, for sure, absolutely.
So there is value now, and whether, whether, just the value of the people that are walking up down the street, which I maybe want to...
Well, I think special events are a different case.
As far as value comes, this is more, you know, everyday, it's not the same as Rainier Days or Fourth of July.
Yeah, but we have to set everyday standards, and special occasions, I think, definitely have room for, you know, adjustments.
That was what I was trying to get into.
Yeah, of course.
We may, we may wanna look at special occasions as waiting minutes or doing something for that particular day, if we're trying to attract it, maybe we don't have to.
Well, Looney's...
Yeah, I understand what I'm saying.
Looney's had Brahas there on their request, Looney's requested Braha numerous occasions to come and...
That's fine, but they were using city power.
Yes, they were, yeah.
So there's, that's where the discon... So, there's, that's where the disconnect is, if Looney's wants to put them on their own property, on their private property, and provide the power for them, fine with me, but when I'm paying my taxes and it's going to provide power for a business that's basically competing against me, although I do feel like they enhance our town, I like the walkability, I feel like the Fun Food Factory, brahahs, they all bring something else to the table, maybe it's people with limited budgets can go there, or people that have small kids that don't wanna come for a sit-down meal, so I do find value, if I, that was, if you misunderstood me, I meant, I think they're valuable, but I also think that the city needs to make it a revenue source, because having business in town as a revenue source, I'm a revenue source for you, Canilever's a revenue source, Rainier Media's a revenue source, so all businesses that wanna come into town have to be a source of revenue, especially if they're using city amenities.
Understood, your point's well taken, I think, and I think that's what I was trying to make, I think we've got a permit, and you hit on the point, sanitation, water, power, location, those things are what we have to address.
That's exact.
Try to draft it up, or something here, and something that we're gonna have to look over, try to grow an equitable cost for it.
And as far as what I wrote down, I went big, because I know I have to negotiate, so, of course, there's not, there's, I'm not gonna get everything that I wrote down, but I want all of those things to be considered, 'cause I think it's important, and, you know, I especially think that protecting where they park and protecting the beauty of our town is also very important, so.
The fire and green, the whole part, and the last.
Well, and we've been doing that at Rainy Lake Grill, and I believe Canilever does that to the, for this extent that they can, and providing the fact that we're on the lake, and we have to protect this beautiful gem of a lake that we have, and throwing styrofoam and plastics and things, I just don't think we should be a town that does that. You know, there are towns that make ordinances that you have to use environmentally friendly products, because they're gonna get dropped on the ground, they're gonna get blown into the lake, kids are gonna take them to the beach, they're gonna get stuck in the sand, not that they buy out a grate there, but eventually, they do, so, I don't know, I feel like it's important, and I would like you guys to address it, and.
You know, I appreciate it, Karina, and that's, that's the type of input, when we have a situation, we have a request for this, we have an ordinance coming up, and we're gonna try to apply some prime and reason, too, so we certainly want input, and obviously, this is what I receive is good input.
Yeah.
You know, I get decisions, you know.
Well, I like the walkability factor of having the food trucks, and I'm not threatened by them as competition, I just want them to be paying their fair share like I am, and that's.
Well, as you know, I think it's called the Green River Ordinance, that's the peddlers on the street, there's a lot of cities prohibit the Green River, they have the Green River Ordinance, so peddlers can't be setting up food stands all over there, doing things like that, so, you know, it's a, it's an issue that's, that you say, probably have to address.
Well, I'm hoping we can set some stricter guidelines before summer.
One of the reasons why the food trucks showed up was years ago, when we first started doing, getting involved into the Red Club, me personally, and the holidays when I was on the council here, we wanted our Rainier Days festivities, and whatever they were, Fourth of July, all to be, to attract people to come, so we sat down, and we said, well, the best way to do it is to get some food trucks from here, so we offered them everything free to come in, so people would come, and I mean, you know what happened, it just exploded.
Yeah, that's great.
Now, it's happening so often now, that we do, I believe, that we do have to incorporate some kind of ordinance now for it, because we don't have to ask or beg them anymore, before we had to, now we don't have to.
Well, and it's an opportunity out here, because you've created a town that has walkability, so people are coming here because they wanna visit Rainier.
Yeah, the attendance, it creates the opportunity that they don't have to pay something now.
Yep.
So, I think, a little more homework, I want you guys to look at this, and consider what Karina put forth, but also, I think most of the stuff was pointed out in the, in suggested ordinance that Cheryl drew up, and some of the fees and that, but do some math on it, and Cheryl, what was the date, what was, so everybody's clear, what was the, assuming some similar thing, that brahah was down here last, last year, in three days a month, so that was what, 12 days?
Oh, they weren't here, they were, their truck was here the whole time, they just were only open like three days.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that's, well, but that, did the use continue all those times?
No, they had a lot of days that they weren't open.
12 days, it went up, it went up $64 in 12 days, you know, that's $5, $5, $5.90.
I will say that I'm super agreeable, because I think you could extend the 21 days annually, because I think.
No, that's the statute.
Oh, it is the Minnesota statute, oh, well, there you go.
No, I'm okay with installation fees and everything else, because obviously, some of the fights for a permit, you know, there's a penalty, so.
Do you know if there's a power pole by the Rainier Beach, too, 'cause I couldn't remember if it's right by that?
Yeah, are you familiar with that?
I think there's one up by where the Red Can, up by the Red Can, which is hard.
But it's, yeah, but it's not like a 220 plug, it's just a regular power.
No, it's just regular power.
Because I, I don't know, I think the city could consider creating some nice places for food trucks to go, that are accessible to people, you know, I mean, maybe further down the road, maybe not this year, but maybe, something to think about.
That's another conversation we have, that, you know, we've been discussing, maybe doing some improvements into the park, you know, trying to do that, so, actually, a park down here would be a good place for another location, like you're saying, some things like that, so all those things are on the table right now, you know, I mean, it just happens to be.
I just know that with all the restaurants going backwards, that a lot of people are turning to food trucks now, I know a lot of my friends in the cities that lost their jobs, at least two of them have started their own food trucks.
You know, that was sustaining, the economic, he's just trying to support, like any other food truck, so, anyway, okay, I think we had enough discussion on that, and that would be, so, guys, another homework session for next week, that's why we have the council on the hall, we can make some, can we next week, don't have to carry these on to the following one, that leaves us, well, okay, the open forum, the only thing I had on open forum, or I think I already told the audience, that the street project for 120 here was bid yesterday, and it come 8.2% under the engineer's estimate, so I'm sure it's gonna be awarded, and there's a June 31st, or June 30th completion date, so it'll be open by July 4th.
Really?
Yes, yeah, so it's a, it's a, not a rush project, but it's, you guys are gonna have to get after it. So anyway, so that, with that news, that's good, but again, I know we've been talking all this late planning for a year and a half now, right, so, we can get decisions on some of this stuff that we have on the table tonight, and hopefully, we can get the engineer to get their plans drawn, and he's ready to do that, for what the letter says, and then we can have that open meeting, and we can make a decision of that, without anything in the audience, anybody got anything? Cheryl?
Just a quick comment, we know all schedules kinda slip sometimes, and so, at some point, if it doesn't look like they're gonna make June 30th, we'll have to be deciding how we're gonna do July 4th, with the trucking and the, the town.
I didn't hear all that you, with the.
Just the idea that maybe they won't be done, and so, at what point do we have to think, how are we gonna do July 4th, if we've got a big unfinished project?
Right now, with your contract obligations, there's liquidated damages that are charged to the contractor if he's not done, but obviously, it hasn't even started, it hasn't even been awarded, it's been bid, it usually takes a week to make the award, and then, you know, this is a street job, you ain't gonna start for May 4th, or something like that, so it's gonna be early May, and they're gonna have a couple of months to do it, that's blacktop, curb gutter, go, one deal, so, you know, that was, that was in the bid specification, so they have to put a lot of horsepower into it to get it done, that's, so we'll watch it for sure, because we can't make any plans, because it is, it is gonna be blocked off, but I think there's some staging that can be done, so that we try to open up, Karina, if you're gonna be open again, the last thing you need is a construction project right in front, plus to eat a lot.
Happy for helping there, building that.
So, but we'll get through it, we'll get through it, anything else?
We'll just set the sun and lots from your house, and make them perk over your place.
You're gonna make them perk by your house?
Yeah, we'll pound them, perk at your house.
Smell them over.
Exactly.